Public hearings via Zoom.
Put the arrow by the microphone, it's probably on the wrong. On the Dell, go to the. We test. It's working, same one, two, three, four. Speakers are on the wrong. Go to the other. The other microphone. Go back to the thing, click on the other one. The sound system is not right. Go click to echo, echo. Can you hear us now?
Is the sound system working? Yes, excellent, okay, thank you for catching that. We have a motion to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous, the minutes are approved. Okay, under receipt of applications, we need to acknowledge receipt of an application. PZ twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. It's a site plan modification for fourteen North Road. The applicant is Don's Auto Care Service. That will be heard at a future meeting. Do we have anything on performance, bond, actions, permit extensions, and road acceptance? Okay, our next order of business is the continued public hearing. On PZ twenty twenty-two dash nineteen. Which is two ninety-seven North Road, it's a special use permit renewal for soil management facility. The applicant is North Road Material LLC. For the record, cease and desist. Order was issued. And. Ruth Ann has been working on this. So could you give us an update? On where we are, and I understand from the town attorney, we've been advised to. Not continue the public hearing at this point and. Close vote until the next meeting, but we should get an update.
Cease and desist was ordered, it was issued based on. Information claimed from the public hearing and research on that information. There are specific actions required, and I met with folks that are here out on site yesterday. With the building official. And they're working towards gathering some information, which is one of the items on the actions required. This really has to do with, we have trouble here, it really has to do with. Two items, one, filling in the area outside of. The area that had been approved to be filled, and then. The acceptance of dredge material. And looking to see whether or not that was clean bill. So they're gathering information on the origin of that material. They've submitted some chemistry for my review, and they'll be getting the bills of lien receipts just to. Understand how much of what was brought in. And I think that the applicant is looking to do some modification of their plans as a means to. You know. Count for the area that they have to fill.
That's where we're at, okay, the applicant has requested to. Provide information for the record at this point, we are not. Going to get into a debate and we're going to. Wait for the outcome of this order to get resolved. Applicant before.
Good evening, JR three JR Russo and associates here representing. The Kemet Family Limited Partnership. You did see the abbreviated, I guess, as built that we prepared for this particular application at your last meeting, I really haven't had much involvement. But the chemists came to me this morning with the cease and desist order, and they've asked me to try to help them through the process of. Resolving the issues and moving it forward, so. I will be assisting them with that, at this point, I don't know a whole lot more about it, because I've only got a little bit of time today to look into it, I have a free conversation. With Ruth at the planning office. And talked a little bit about the cease and desist, but. It's the chemist's desire to try and work through this and see if we can come to a resolution to. Get everybody comfortable with where they are, and then in the process of putting the information together that was requested. In the cease and desist order, so. They have hired our office JR Russo as well as an LVP. Environmental professional to help them. Analyze and go through the process, so we hope to be meeting with you in the near future, providing the information that. That the staff has requested, so we can move this forward. Thank you.
Merrickham and North Road Materials, we are. Granting, you know, for the extension of this, but I'm just asking, do we have steps early to the right timeframe for that, or do we have to provide a written extension for time? I don't know how long it's been since.
I think the next meeting.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else you need to put on the record now?
I don't know that.
Okay. Then, a motion to continue this to our next meeting would be in order.
To make a motion to continue public hearing pleasing twenty twenty-two. Dash nineteen for two ninety-seven North Road, especially use permit renewal for soil management facility, the applicant is North Road Materials LLC. Until our next meeting, which will be held on September twenty-second.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, so this is continued to our next meeting. We will open. The new public hearing. For. Application. Twenty-two dash twenty-two twenty-five South Main Street, it is a zone change from. From B two to M one.
Good evening. My name is Jim Stanton, and I'm the. Owner of this property on two two five South Main Street in the corner of Abbey Road. You have my. My portfolio, and I think these are the two. Most important things that I want to point out to everybody on the board. I'm going to go with this one first. Down here is that, you know, almost the last street in town is Abbey Road. And you can see my little pink property there, it used to be M one, and it was like a block of M one. I changed it to B two because I proposed to do a retail shopping center in the eighties. And I got it all ready to go, except for. I think I needed to put, show the dumpster fence around the dumpster. And I didn't come back for it because we were kind of in a full-blown recession by then, and. I I just shelved it, and I didn't, I didn't pursue anything more until the two thousands. And in the two thousands, I pursued, you know, CDS and Walgreens and. Businesses like that, that they would come down Route five, and they would look around, and they go, where's the population, we need population, not just traffic. So. The only people I had interested were. Gas stations, and I didn't really want to put a gas station on the corner and kind of muck up the rest of the acreage. So I I didn't do that, and. I've had car dealers chasing me for years, and. I I didn't really want to do that, because I don't want to sell the property, I want to keep it in my family, I've had it for forty years, why not keep it a little longer? I'd like to get a steady income out of it and not, not, not just sell it off, you know? And so I'm here tonight and ask you, let me change this back to M one. And. I'm going to, I'm vacillating between. Small business buildings for like two thousand square foot a piece for businesses or self-storage, which. Seems to be illogical to me, but it seems to be growing business, I don't get it, you know? And it's more of a passive use for the property, and. I will be exploring ways to make that property. You know, greener than than some other, you know, properties might be. And I will strive to make it prettier. That's what I do, I build, I don't build a lot of houses, but I try to make even a plane house look better by. Changing maybe the windows, changing a little bit of the roof line. You're changing different things, and. When I come back with a building plan, I will show what I've done in the past, I didn't think it was necessary for tonight. So I've I've marked your copies with all the, you know, see, you could look around and see. That it's M one, M one, M one, B two, B two, B two. M one, M one. This one says A one, but it's also saying M one on different maps, like this map says it's M one. So I'm confused. So I'm not, I'm not asking the spot zone, because. You know, it's mostly M one around my corner. You know, I'm well aware of that, because I I serve on board too. I would enter and exit on Abbey Road, so it would be a safer proposal. Other proposals that I had, I was thinking to come maybe only in Route five. Because of the sightline, I have a driveway there, but I wouldn't, I I don't, I will hope not to have to use that, I don't think I'm going to use that. Because the sightline here is a little bit of a curve. And I like not to have cars slowing down to go into my property. But that's down the road, so tonight I'm here just talking about really a zone change for, it's almost four acres. And. I will show you some pictures of other buildings. That I've been collecting for years. This is a self-storage building. And somebody has added a little bit to it, it's so much nicer than the average one. And. This is another one, this is story and a half, two stories, it's made to look like a horse or a cow barn, you know? You know, so I probably will try to go with that kind of theme, and I also thought about doing a building like this for individual businesses, but. In order to make it work, I need to be warehousing or manufacturing, otherwise I have to get too much parking. This building's in West Lee, they only have like the four or six cars for each unit. And and. I wanted to put the idea that, and they made it paddle of all those steel buildings by putting the stone on it, and these. Arms really changes the looks of the building, and. You look around and nobody has a very good looking steel building, they all look terrible. And I don't like though, I will build something terrible.
Questions from the commission?
I I commend you for not selling out to the dealership, but you've sold that property a whole time, well.
Oh, they call me all easily. Well, if I, if I was going to build it, I would make them pretty little buildings, you know, but. I can't make any money, because the building would be like three or four thousand square feet, and then I have to, you know, all the hundred, a hundred cars a piece, you know, I could put like. Three or four in there, but. And I don't know, I, it was not, it was my dream to have a really beautiful two-story. Shopping center, and now I've got to go with something else, because, you know, because I want to keep it. I want to make it attractive, because. When you come into town, you know, you see those, you see Harkins Market, you see the Nutmeg Restaurant. And then after that, the buildings aren't so pretty anymore, so. I've got a little issue with my dry mom. And I will make it a pretty, I like to make it pretty and low maintenance, it'll be. I already mowed quite a bit of grass along the frontage, probably add a little more grass. And then start from there, and. I I think I can do a very attractive project.
Any other questions from the commission? This is a public hearing, is there anybody in the room who would like to comment on this application? Give it a four again? If there anybody online would like to comment on this application? Okay, hearing none. It seems clear to commission doesn't seem to have additional questions. A motion to. Close the public hearing seems to be in order.
I'm making a motion that we close the public hearing on PZ twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two twenty-five South Main Street. Zone change from B two to M one, the applicant being James Stitt.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. The. Hearing is closed, we have a. Recommendation from staff with a motion to consider to approve. Someone would like to proceed with that?
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty twenty-two dash twenty for zone change from B two district to an M one industrial district. This approval is granted subject to conformance with the submitted application supporting materials and public hearing presentations. And may be modified by the commission in this approval. And the following conditions and modifications, and one binding. The proposed zone change agrees with the East Windsor Plan Conservation and Development. This is in a memo from Luther and Kelly Grace Director of Planning and Development dated August fifth, two twenty-two.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, so it's approved.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, the next public hearing is PZ twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one. Twenty-eight Rye Street, it's a special use permit for residential duty ones. This is something we've heard. About about already, as it came before us for. Zone change. I want to invite the applicant to present this application.
Good evening, for the record, JR Street JR Russo and Associates. Here representing Paul Marino, Marino Homes. Paul is also here this evening, this is an application for a special use permit to allow a duplex home in an R two zone. We're located at twenty-eight Rye Street, which is essentially right around the corner here, just down the street. On the other side of the school, on the side of the intersection. There's a duplex currently on the corner that's been here, I think it was built back in the fifties and sixties. White home on the corner, this is the large barn. And we were here. I was here in the old one, and we split a lot, there was a subdivision probably a year and a half ago or so, I don't know exactly where it was allowed back. There is sewer available for this, and there is sewers located here. Horse mane and the pump bringing it over, there's water available, and oh, they'll control it as well as natural gas coming from the side here. So Paul's proposing a duplex. It's a. About nine hundred square feet, I think roughly per. about nine hundred square feet, I think roughly per side, two bedrooms on each side, a single bath with the tub and a stall shower. Dining room, kitchen and living room space. They are si- a single car garage is located in the front. I'm sure the architect knows in a minute. Uh, drive in, I mean here, garage door, garage door, main entry for unit A, main entry for unit B. And side entrance and deck over here for each unit, the deck and sliders come off of the dining space. Uh, off of the floor plan, the sleeping spaces and bedrooms are located to the rear, here. So take a quick look. And I made a full-size copy of the front and the sides. I thought that's what you were most interested in. So this is, this is looking at it from the street, looking at the front. As we showed you in the, in the site plan, driveway in the middle, single car garage, single car garage. Unit entry, unit entry blanked by windows on either side. There is a slight overhang and a bald column next to each one of these doors. So there's a little bit of an overhang that you can actually see if you put through the architectural, so that's an eleven by seven. It's there, you can see it. It's probably on the second page, I think. The architecturals that you have don't show the decks. It just shows the stairway coming down off of that dining room space. We felt it was important to add some outside space with the deck that they would come down onto, I think. Twelve by twelve, that's what we decided on, because I think that's what the truss material comes in twelve-foot stock. So we, we do something, right? We don't want to cut up trucks. It costs too much.
I mean, it's a hundred bucks.
Yeah, so, so the decks are twelve by twelve, the stairs that come down on those, so those are shown inside. In terms of materials, I'm assuming architectural roofing, those, it'll be vinyl siding. Um, I'm not sure what color Paul's deciding, but it won't be pink. It'll be something in keeping, I'm sure, with the price for you to be, you know, kind of one of those, that's maybe a historical street in town. As you go down, it's all exploring the homes. And this is a pretty decent looking home. In fact, when Paul first talked to me about it, and I don't know if anybody else ever goes down West Street, Burnham. But my wife seems to enjoy the garden bar much more than I do. Just before you get to the garden bar on the right, there's a new duplex, which is more or less a carbon copy of this. And I remember the first time I went by it, I said to them, I'm like, that's pretty nice of a duplex. And it's basically this house, other than it's stretched a little bit and has two, two car garages instead of one car garage. But it's, it's just before the garden barn. So if they're to go find one, glance off to your right as you head south towards the Blue Station, you'll see it. It's, it was just built again last year in print. And, and this is a similar layout to that particular house. So that's a basic overview of, of the application. I think it meets your regulations in terms of, of size and so forth. So we set back about fifty feet on the road. All the utilities are available for requests which are required. We're in the right zone. Thank you for granting Paul his own change for the law to do this, but if anybody has any questions, happy to respond.
It's a lot fair looking, standard spare box.
It is. It's a pretty good looking house, actually.
I know. Like a Dean's across the street. Got to keep up with him.
I just have an observation. We've been running into a lot of problems. The, looking at the elevations, the house is going to be a foot lower than the road. It was lower than the correct. Um, with other instances in town where houses were built lower than the road. Eventually, we get complaints about drainage and the water from the road and that. The only observation I would think is maybe a slot drain in front of the garages and tie it into the footing drain. No.
That's a mistake. So let me explain to you how it's created. So if you look at the plan, here we come down, we created a low point. It's a little better than halfway down in the driveway. So this point is lower than the garage door elevation. So the water coming here is going to come off this way, come off this way, go to the backyard. Putting a, a slot drain in front of the floor and tying it to the footing drains is introducing water to the footing, which is not what you want to do. You can pipe it separately, but there have been cases where you had absolutely no other option to do that. And we've done it in a couple of cases with Cecil would like to do it. Putting a belly in the driveway, firing this, we've got enough space. It's not steep. And it creates a low point about fifteen to twenty feet away from the actual door. And then it comes back up to put the door. So we'll come around and go right around the house. That's always great.
Question Jake, you're showing floor drains in the garage?
That's on the architectural. I don't.
No, we're not. Okay, guys, so that's going to drive a water separator. It's going to.
So I'm not sure why the architectural plan showed that. There won't be any.
And then, I mean, just another observations. Why, why would they not put a, an access from the living space into the garage without having to go outside?
There is, there is, yeah. There's a door. You go right in from the garage.
From the dining room?
Yes. It's those, those small spaces.
That one? Well, I thought that was a closet. Danny wins back here. See, that's right there. Yeah, there's a. So wait, I thought this box out here.
See, this was a. Closet here. It's hard to say, Dave.
Okay.
It's going, let water go in.
And it's gone. Trust me. He's the engineer. I understand he's an engineer. I work for an engineer. I get it.
Is there a basement or is it on the slab?
No, it's a basement.
So it'll be a shared basement because you're showing one, one hatchway access?
Petition. There's, there'll be a petition in the basement between them and the, I think your utilities will be in the basement.
Right.
By you.
So there will be an access.
Yes.
Yep.
Are there questions from the commission? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the room who would like to speak from this application?
Uh, yes. Uh, good evening. Chamber got a eighty-four old Ellen to call. Uh, I'm behind the proposed house. Uh, my concern is drainage. Um, as the gentleman stated, a lot of that water from Rice Street is going to come into the house or come down that, that driveway. The way the elevation is, if you know where my property is, it slows down. So in the spring, heavy rain, I get a lot of surface water. So my concern was, when I looked at the plans, there's a drain to open space or whatever that's called. I don't understand why that is. There was an easement of a drainage. Why can't that be connected? So it doesn't come into my property?
Uh, J R Street for the record, there is a proposed easement. I'm not sure that it's been executed yet. There was no easement there to begin with.
There is, I know there is pipe there.
There is a pipe there. You're absolutely right.
So why can't that get connected? My, my concern is I get a lot of surface water. I have a septic tank back there. I get a lot of debris. Again, it's the way the elevation is. If you're taking water from the road, I don't know what the water table is at that site.
Yeah, we wouldn't actually be taking any water from the road because when you come up off the road, there'll be a little bump in the driveway that we should beat the road water out. Or the water, water that hits the driveway will come.
Okay, but you just said that it will go out to the backyard, which ends up.
That hits the driveway. That's correct.
Which ends up my yard. So that's my concern.
It's draining that way now.
It's draining that way now, but the more pavement you have, the more gutters you have, more everything you have. Again, water table, water. I'm just, I'm concerned about the erosion and I'm concerned about the, uh, the drainage. And again, with this pipe that's there, it's a dotted line. That runs parallel to the.
We couldn't determine where it went, to be honest. There is a catch basin down part of your house. And you assume that it goes in there, although I don't know that for sure. I'm not sure that.
There's a pipe there. I would rather, I would rather find out where the pipe is.
Nobody knows, Markells. Yeah, we don't know where it goes. We did investigate it.
Maybe we can finish that pipe.
Why can't you find out?
Can't find it.
You have the pipe. See the pipe?
I can see it at the end of Rice Street, but I don't know where the other is.
Follow it.
Some crap. I had one on, I own a property on Depot Street, two years ago, a little package store there. And there was a pipe in that property. And we never know when, the town couldn't find Bernie. I don't remember Bernie.
Bernie Sharp.
But yeah, he was sharp and he couldn't find where that went. So I took it back. We dug it and I crawled in it and it came out in Mill Pond. Imagine that, went under the road. I crawled all the way down and came out in the pond.
Really?
It was in the driveway. Think of that.
It's, I mean, a similar property where.
Bernie Sharp.
All the neighbors drained into my yard. I feel for this gentleman. I wonder if there's anything you can do to mitigate drainage movements ago.
I think in terms of root water, we could provide some mitigation in terms of some infiltration into the ground. First, for some of the storm events, I think that could be done. I think if we do some investigative work along with the Public Works Department, that, that we might be able to determine where that pipe goes. And I, I think when the law was approved, um, my own recollection was that Len Norton wanted a drainage system because I think he assumes that at some point in the time in the future, that's probably going to have to be replaced. And without an easement, they wouldn't be able to do that. He now has an easement. Uh, so maybe a little more investigative work could be done to see if we could.
Well, that's all I'm asking. I mean, I.
We tie it into.
Again, you have a pipe that's parallel. I, I would, you know, taking that surface water away would be. Uh, again, I get a lot of debris. I'm, I'm worried about erosion. It, it ends up on the driveway. The driveway is going to, you know, sink.
The only thing about that, if you tie into it, it doesn't go on there.
It does.
You know, someone. But it could be paved in.
Right. Chances, chances are, and Len and I have talked about this, chances are it does go through your property, under your driveway and tie in that catch basin.
It could. I mean, to me, it would either be at the end of the driveway or we have that gully where all the rock is across from where Andy is. And he has a catch basin on the others. So.
It's not uncommon here where a pipe can just go into a pipe and just have some street signs around it and cement with.
No, I'm saying a lot of things they collapsed they over the years.
Well, that pipe drains because all up the street and across, we're earning those, all that water goes in his little
Catch basin.
Thing, across the road and then it goes somewhere because we don't have a lot of flooding issues up there. So I guess what he's, in, in his house, he's got a high water table in his house too. It's right at his basement floor.
So I guess the, the answer to the question that I'm bothered for Paul, so if you want to show us. I, I think he's willing to work with, with the neighbor and, and possibly the public works that are involved with the.
If we could tie into that by all means.
So put a manhole on top of, put a doghouse on top of the pipe or whatever.
I mean, I, I don't have any problem if I am into it, you know what I mean?
And if you wanted to replace the whole thing.
But he's going to take care of it. I don't, I don't want to.
So, so we, we can work that out.
Look, if not, we'll supply a boat.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hydro electric.
Alright, thank you.
No, but that's not the problem, right?
It goes like here.
It's okay when you. Dive into it, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Like I said, it, it looks like they run parallel. Where are you going to have? Drain.
Yeah, well, chances are we're, we'll work that. I can't speak for Len, but but uh, chances are we're there. Maybe, maybe we just put a new pipe in and while that's a base to be in there, you know. And then we're not digging the lawn up later.
Right.
And maybe we go right down through your yard and right into the catch basin. That, you know, that probably wouldn't be a bad idea and we're up for upgrading our stuff and that's the perfect opportunity.
It's true. I'm, I'm welcome.
So, so.
We'll work it out.
Right. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this application in the room? Is there anybody online who would like to comment on this application? Okay, I think questions have been addressed. Comments seem to be satisfied. So a motion to close the public hearing will be in order.
I'm making a motion we close the public hearing on PZ twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, twenty-eight Rice Street, a special use permit for residential duplex. The applicant is Paul Marino.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. The hearing is closed. We have a memo from Ruth with a potential motion.
I'm making a motion we approve application PZ twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine for a special use permit for the construction of a residential duplex at twenty-eight Rice Street, Broadwood, Connecticut, map seventy-seven, block forty, block one dash one, zone R one. The owner applicant is Marino Homes. This approval is granted subject to conformance. The submitted application, supporting materials and public hearing presentations that may be modified by the commission and this approval and the following findings and provisions. We have eight findings listed and I'll, I'll, I'm just giving one finding and twelve conditions listed. I have a memo from Louisiana County Grease Planner dated September sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Dave. Any discussion?
Did we already discuss or was it done previously? Sidewalks? All it's done?
At subdivision. And I incorporated that. I referenced.
Yeah. We didn't discuss the waves?
That was in the site.
Yeah, I asked because I was here again.
I remember correctly.
Save the tree.
Save the trees.
I don't know.
Never save the picture. Any other discussion?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, we can. It's seconded. Okay.
Okay, no other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I, I built the house on Rice Street years ago. We saved these historical trees. I mean, we had them all around. The homeowner comes in, buys the house, consumed. Every single eye did everything in the world to go around.
You have a circular river.
Well, there's medical too, but I think.
Make sure they're off the road, but twenty feet.
I don't like that. I like to put them on your prop right now.
Off the road, twenty feet. The salt will kill them.
The next order of business is a new public hearing that we are opening on PZ twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two. That is for one fifteen Standic Road. It's a special use permit for event hosting. The applicant is the East Windsor Historical Society. The applicant has requested, um, that we open the hearing. We don't begin discussion and we continue this to the next regular meeting um, scheduled for October eleventh. The reason being is the. um attorney for the neighbors in the area is not available. And um so the hearing is now open and a motion to continue would be in order.
I'm making a motion. We continue PZ twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two for one fifteen Scenic Road, special use permit for event posting. The applicant, East Windsor Historical Society. We request that it be tabled until the meeting held on October eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. So that's tabled and we'll take it up on October eleventh. We have no business, no new business. Under other business, we have the CEO report. Well, I'm going to give you a different stuff. Danielle added, added three items at the bottom of the last page, I think. They're not even as much. We'll just swap out. Bring in that one. We got it. It's very mad.
Talking to builders, put more trees up because we're, thank you so much. How do we change? We can talk about that.
Get the whole board out here.
Was not planned.
What do we do? Seeing the symbol show.
Living off what's in life because I'm here. Don't fool yourself. So I think make the term.
They're not you, Joe. They're not you.
It looks like there's a lot of complaints on Trump's word. There was a lot with regard to eighteen, you know, the caps to the eighteen, like parking on the property. And there's one woman who was on a mission. And yeah, it's the other thing. So Danielle was on that quite diligently. Working with folks.
So it also looks like there's a lot of things now they're ending on a light ordinance for us to be able to pursue. Any idea where we stand with that?
I like that, yes. The next board of selectmen meeting was reviewing the changes they made in the last meeting. Uh, the building official will be there to speak. He's going to lead the empty, at least one meditation of the light ordinance. Um, once it's passed, uh, he's got experience administering light enforcement in other towns.
Worked out the verbiage. Make it easily enforceable so it doesn't leave a lot of stuff to interpretation.
A lot of it has to do with building, kind of stuff, too. So. Yeah, so he'll be there to just give his perspective on the current draft and that's.
So we're probably two months away then?
Let's go. It's a bit. Well, I after. Say, let's go to, um, it has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen and then go to the town meeting.
Public hearing. Through them or you us?
Yeah, it's just a town meeting. Not the heavens. But we send the other one. And then whatever.
Yeah, there's two to be reconsidered. There's the property maintenance and then junk vehicles and other things.
So it's up to everybody.
Well, this better than we had years ago, which was nothing.
Yes.
It's a hard thing to do.
Yeah.
It's a hard thing to do. The tool, never reach well. So the two departments would came up. Anything else under the ZPO report?
The job.
Ask that alone?
It's her favorite part of the whole thing.
Yeah.
Drive through, about to drive through the properties.
Um, no correspondence, anything for a business meeting? Nope. Okay. And no executive session? So a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Adjourned, right?
I can make motions.
Like mostly adjourned.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-six.
Probably.
Yeah.
That happened. Yeah. That's ten o'clock. I'm waiting to go.